Good afternoon. Let's call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the August 10, 2017, meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by some TV digital media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is a consent agenda. These are items which the petitioner has requested withdrawal or continuance, or items which staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one will be permitted to speak unless the planning board asks a question. For general use district zoning, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to a specific use of the property. For special use district zoning, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final approval by the City Council or the county commissioners. As such, votes taken today will go to those bodies for their consideration during their review. If you're addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First over, item of business approval of the minutes of the July 13 and 24 meetings. Any additions, corrections?
Move approval.
Second, motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now I'll call Mr. Aaron King for our consent agenda.
All right. First item is Item B1, zoning docket W-3334, and this is a request to rezone about 3/4 of an acre from limited business, special use, to neighborhood business. And you can see the site there in yellow. It's on the north side of Old Hollow Road, west of Marydale Drive. And this item was continued from your July meeting in order to fulfill the requirements of neighborhood outreach provisions. As you can see in the packet, there's been a detailed summary submitted, so those requirements have been met. And looking at the site, there is an existing non-residential building on the front half of that site. Our staff reviewed this, and we found it to be consistent with area plan recommendation, which calls for commercial for this site. And in fact, staff views it as a downzoning to the NB district. So staff is supportive of this NB general use request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. Declared the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second, motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Lee. Any discussion?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Has it been determined how long this piece of property was without a tenant, or not in use, I guess would be the proper?
I'm not sure. I know, I think in Gary's staff report, it mentions it got rezoned around 2007 for internet cafe. Not sure how long that stayed in business, but to our knowledge, I believe that was the last use that was in that building. I would say several years, but I'm not exactly sure how many.
So another way to look at this is it would revert to some other zoning, but the other zoning was what?
Well, the existing zoning was limited business, special use, and the only approved use is services A.
Yeah. Okay.
So it could be any use that services A.
Yeah. And I assume that the person that's taking over this does understand that it will continue as that if they don't continue to use it as that kind of business. It can't be more a higher zoning, higher use zoning and whatnot.
If council approves the NB zoning, it's NB zoning, and they're allowed free range of anything allowed in the NB district.
Yeah, it's just, it's not been in use for so long.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Motion for approval, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2, zoning docket W-3336, and this is a request to rezone about half acre from RS9 to pedestrian business, limited use. And you can see the site there in yellow, the northwest corner of Sprague Street and Dechen Street. It's got one existing single-family home left on it, and it's located in an area with a mixture of PB zoning, highway business zoning, and then some residential zoning to the south and to the east. And this item was also continued from your July meeting in order to fulfill the neighborhood outreach requirements. Councilmember Taylor organized and set up a meeting in late July for this. Unfortunately, we did not have anybody attend that meeting, but the effort was made to reach out to the community for this one. As staff has reviewed this, the area plan does call for commercial use for the site. It's a special land use area that has several conditions to deal with the development of this, and we feel that the petitioner has satisfied several of those through conditions attached to this that deal with building placement, setbacks, parking, and building materials. The petitioner has also whittled down the list of proposed uses to what staff feels is an appropriate list. So given that, staff would recommend approval of this limited use zoning request.
Again, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. Declared the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second, motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Younger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is B3, zoning docket W-3337, and this is a request to rezone 0.9 acres from GI General Industrial to Limited Industrial, limited use. And this is on the west side of Old Lexington Road, east of 52, and south of Wattown Street, not too far from the previous case. Again, this was also continued from the July meeting for neighborhood outreach concerns. Councilmember Taylor's meeting actually covered both of these cases, so again, that requirement has been fulfilled. The area plan does call for the site to be zoned industrial. In fact, this is probably a downzoning to go to LIL. And the only restriction that's been placed on this is a limitation of uses. The petitioner has deleted the use shelter for the homeless. All the other LI uses would be permitted. So with that, staff feels this is a reasonable request and would recommend approval.
Again, no one signed up. Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. Declared the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second, motion Mr. Lamb, second Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is B4, zoning docket W-3338, and this is a request to rezone about 3.3 acres from RMUS to PBS. This is on the east side of South Main Street, north of Cassell Street. I believe in your agenda packet, it says this item has been requested for continuance. Since we put together your agenda book, the applicant has reached back out to planning staff and asked if this item be withdrawn. They got the request into us by the deadline, so this item is automatically withdrawn, and no vote is needed on this item. Next item is B6, zoning docket W-3339, and this is a site plan amendment for GBS, general business, special use zone property on the south side of Haynesville Boulevard. It's north of the Costco development and kind of across the street from the Target and Coles and Home Depot development. This was the former Nukes Eatery that's shown in yellow here. In 1998, when this site was originally rezoned, it was part of a larger development. It was kind of, if you follow the mouse, it's shown in there. One of the conditions placed on that original rezoning was that that original site could have no more than one restaurant with drive-through. And that's already taken up by the KFC Long John Silver. They have a drive-through restaurant there now. The intent of this request is to allow a second drive-through restaurant on this site. That's what the site plan amendment is for. And this is a site plan that was submitted with this request. It largely keeps the site intact, everything on the north side, the parking, the access point, the drive aisles. It's fairly consistent with what's on the ground now. The existing building would remain. There is a little change in circulation on the back of the building to accommodate some one-way angled parking. And then, as I mentioned to you, it would allow a drive-through that's located on the backside of the building with a stacking lane coming around the back and up the side. But for the most part, the site stays intact. Staff reviewed this. Given the existing development pattern out there, we believe this is a reasonable request, and we would recommend approval of this site plan amendment.
Okay. Thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. Declared the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second, motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Lee. Any discussion?
Seeing as that when this was designed, and not just this plot, I assume, but that whole area, and that there wasn't to be drive-through, can you reconstruct for me the thinking of why that was the case at that time?
I wasn't here in '98. I might lean on Paul a little bit for that history, but I think the attempt was probably to limit the amount of those fast-food type establishments that have those drive-throughs to limit that number. I think as we've seen over the past several years, there's been a demand for more of those uses, and I think that's what's driving this request that you're seeing today.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to get at is why was there an attempt to limit it? Did it have to do with traffic? Did it have to do with the way?
Yeah. And that was before. That was before my time, too.
Before yours.
But as I understand it, this area was primarily a retail area. They wanted restaurants that were sit-down restaurants, were not interested in high-traffic-generating fast-food types of things. So that, even though there have been a couple in that area, the Chick-fil-A, you know, it's been mostly sit-down restaurants. But that, I believe that was the intent, was to keep the high-traffic-volume fast-food uses at a minimum in this area.
Okay. Yeah. We do, we have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B7, zoning docket F-1568, and this is a request to rezone about 19 acres from RS40 to RS20. And you can see the site there in yellow. It's on the east side of Lassiter Road, just kind of southeast of Center Grove Church Road, and north of the Waterford subdivision. There's a mixture of zoning in this area. There's some RS40 to the north. Waterford is zoned RS20. Further south, you have Waterford Village, it's zoned RS15S. And a little bit further out of this image, which you don't see, is the Waterford Glen Development, which the county commissioners approved several years ago. That was also RS15S. Staff has reviewed this. We believe this is a reasonable request, given that it's located within GMA3, that has access to public water and sewer, and given the zoning pattern in the area being consistent with RS20 that it's adjacent to. So staff would recommend approval of this request.
Okay. No one signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. Declared the public hearing closed. Move approval. Motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Bryan. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Paul.
Okay. That brings us to number?
Number nine.
Let's see, number nine. And that is the UDO text amendment 281, and it has to do with the amending the Unified Development ordinances to require an elective body special use permit for limited campus uses in residential zoning districts. The staff sent out a notice about what we were proposing on this originally on June the 19th to all of the institutions that have campus zoning, as well as to a number of neighborhood organizations in areas around the campus zoning, as well as the Neighborhood Alliance. And we, and we sent out a reminder one on July 14th. We had not heard from anyone about this until 24 hours ago. And we heard first from the Neighborhood Alliance expressing some concerns about changing to an elective body special use permit method of approval. And then just today, we heard from the General Counsel for Wake Forest University about changing from the planning board review method of approval. So obviously, those perspectives are different than each other. We were, we wanted to send out that notice in plenty of time so that we would have time for dialogue on that, but unfortunately, we haven't had time since all this has happened in the last 24 hours. Wake Forest is asking for a one-month continuance of this to allow for some dialogue, and we would agree that's a good idea. And what we will, what staff will do is we'll offer to set up a meeting where the different parties can get together. We can discuss that and see if we can come up with some common ground on this. So I would recommend that you all continue it for a month.
Do you think you will have your meeting before our work session or after? That's going to be pretty tight doing it before, isn't it?
It might be hard to do. I don't know, but we can at least give you an update at work session about where we're at.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion that we continue this for a month? So move. Motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Bryan. Any discussion on that? All in favor of one-month continuance? That's unanimous. Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Did we get sent a second copy of that that was the link to that language? Paul, it wasn't in the original email, but did it come out again, the wording of that?
It would be in your agenda book, and it was also on the online version of the agenda?
Okay. Well, it wasn't on the original one that was sent out, but yeah. Okay. Well, maybe I'll get with staff on that to be sure.
All right. Next item is C1. This is PBR 2017-10, and this is a request for a planned residential development in RS9 zoning, 135 single-family lots. You can see the subject property there in yellow. It's on the county line with Forsyth County and Davidson County. It's just south of Cooper Road, kind of in the south-southwest portion of the county. This site originally got a preliminary subdivision approval from the planning board back around, I think, 2007. Nothing was ever developed on this property, and therefore, the preliminary approval expired. So the applicant is back today to get a new preliminary approval for this site. This is the site plan that's been submitted with this request, and as I mentioned to you, it is a planned residential development, so we do look at open space and buffers. And so, starting with passive open space up at the northern portion of the site, there's a lot of area along there, and on the eastern portion, it's floodplain, that would remain open as passive open space. So they more than satisfy the requirement there. For active open space, they have located a good portion of that along their entrance drive. If you can follow the mouse, they're on the north side of that. And we actually asked them to think about maybe locating some additional open space throughout the development. So they did come back and propose kind of a neighborhood pocket park in this area, and another one further in this area to help spread that around. So they do meet the active open space requirement. They provided their 30-foot buffers along the outer edge of their site, so they do meet that. Connectivity index, we require 1.2, and they provided 1.3, so they satisfy that requirement as well. We also asked them to maybe look at providing another link in here to improve connectivity. They did that as well. So they've, they've addressed staff's concerns in a satisfactory way, and we would recommend approval of this planned residential development.
I move approval. I have one question before. Move approval.
Second. Second, Ms. Smith.
Yeah. There's one, two, three, four, five cul-de-sacs. And so, you don't count, have you, it seems like it would be unusual if they could have made that ratio with five cul-de-sacs.
So we had this discussion as among staff, and that might be something that we want to look at down the road. But yes, it, it does, even with those five cul-de-sacs, it does exceed the 1.2 requirement that we have in our ordinance. But yes, staff had the same observation as well.
When you're talking about the number of houses, is that the number of houses in Forsyth County that you were saying, or the total number of houses in the whole development?
So it's 135, and it's?
In the whole development?
Yeah, if you can kind of follow that line. Some of this bleeds over a little bit into Davidson County. The county line kind of goes through some of these lots.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion for approval, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is C2. This is PBR 2017-11, and this is a request for a child daycare center in limited business zoning. This site's located on the south side of Indiana Avenue, across from Home Road. And you may remember this site, several months ago, we had a zoning case that actually zoned this entire tract to limited business, and that was approved by city council. So now the petitioner is back for their planning board review on this, on this site. Let me go back one image. You can see there's already an existing daycare center located on the northern portion of that site. The request today would allow for an expansion of that existing daycare. The existing daycare, again, is located in the northern portion of the site. This would allow for about a 5,000-square-foot addition to the south, and an additional parking area that would be located to the east of that site. It would also allow for an increase in the number of children to be placed at this daycare for a total of 125. Staff has reviewed this. They've met the ordinance requirements for child daycare center, and staff would recommend approval of this request.
Motion Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Younger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this case, F-1567, was continued from your July meeting. You may remember, there was some comment from some of the surrounding property owners, so your continuing was to give the petitioner some additional time to meet with those residents. And I think you've got an update in your packet about the summary of those outreach efforts. The petitioner is St. James United Methodist Church. It's 1.17 acres in size, located on the north side of Athenea Rural Hall Road. And the request is a special use rezoning from RS9 to IPS to allow for the use of daycare center. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there. It is located in Rural Hall. The town has given us notice that they're in support of the request. And just a couple of images there. This is the church. And because the daycare center is not to be operated by the church, it does require a rezoning to actually add that use of child daycare center. And one other additional image here in the back, this is where the proposed play area would be, about a 4,000-square-foot play area that would be separated from these structures here by 15-foot tall tubular yard and would be fenced in. This is the site plan. It has not changed since the site plan that you reviewed at your July meeting. The blue would be the church, and the green is the play area. And again, staff recommends approval of this, and I will be glad to answer any questions. The petitioner is here as well. Any questions of staff at this time?
The buffer, is this map oriented toward the north?
To the north would be to the?
I'd be looking, well, I'm looking at the right side of it. That buffer along there, I believe the note was they were going to the ZVA on a request?
Yes, to the right of that, where the driveway is.
Has that gone through that process?
No, they will not do that until they actually get the rezoning, and then they will apply to the zoning board of adjustment for buffer yard width variance.
And is there any way to curb that buffer yard around that corner and at least take into some account that buffer for the neighbors over there for increased traffic and things like that?
Well?
You know, toward the, in the back parking lot, you know, curb it rather than just the back of the parking lot?
Well, where the buffer does not meet the minimum 15-foot width, that will probably be the level of discussion that the board of adjustment will get into. So wherever they can't meet the width now, that's what the board of adjustment will discuss that detail.
And looking at the, at the site plan, it looks like that's parking lot. So theoretically, you could take part of the parking lot and turn it into a buffer.
That's correct. That's correct. Wherever?
But that isn't being proposed by the applicant.
That's correct. Right. So you're certainly welcome to make that recommendation as a part of your rezoning, and if they choose to do that, they can, and then that would be on record for the board of adjustment to, to review as well. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Bryan?
No. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. So with the IPS, they couldn't do transmission tower?
That's correct. The only two uses are church, a neighborhood-scale church, and daycare center, and they've agreed to a condition where there's no electronic message boards.
Thanks.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Gary. Yes, sir. This is a public hearing. The proponents, first person signed up is Sharon Sprinkle.
My name is Sharon Sprinkle. I live at 221 Creek Stage Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And I am a member of St. James Church, and I am in favor of the after-school program that is being proposed. I believe that children are our future, and we have a moral obligation to support their physical, emotional, social, and cognitive development. I believe that a structured education can and will provide a positive return on our investment that will have far-reaching, far-reaching benefits into our future. And our church is willing, within reason, to make the reasonable accommodations to make this happen.
Thank you, ma'am. Rodney Davis?
My name is Rodney Davis, and I live at 310 West Fourth Street here in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. I, too, am a member of St. James United Methodist Church, have been a member there my whole life, and I am in support of the daycare center there for a couple of reasons. As Sharon so eloquently stated, children, children, they're our future. And all that we can do to invest in their future is not only good for them, but it's good for us as a community. It would also be good for our church community in being that we can positively affect children's lives and also positively affect the spiritual basis in our community. Rest assured, we will do all that's necessary to address all the issues that are, seem to be brought forth by the board, and just everything that we can do to make this happen, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Danielle Springs?
My name is Danielle Sim Springs. I live at 200 Winfield Drive in King, North Carolina. I, too, am a member of St. James, but I'm also the owner of Lilly's Network, and under Lilly's Network is Lilly's Early Knowledge Center, which will be housed at St. James. This was my project, and I have been trying to get something up and going for a while. I did reach out to people in the community, and some of the concerns that came about were like the noise, injury, liability, and that type of thing. The program will be housed inside the church. The playground is the only part of the program that will be outside of the church. As far as noise goes, there is not too much that we can do to control the noise from the children, but if residents would like a schedule of how the day will run so that they know when the children will be outside and that type of thing, I can arrange that. I've been living in Rural Hall for a long time. I'm pretty familiar with all of the residents and where they live, and who they are, and that type of thing, and so I'm always available. This project, I plan, the first phase of the project would be an after-school program, and then it would move into the actual childcare center, which is what we're trying to get rezoned for. It would only be one classroom, housing about 18 children. And the plan is for it to move towards head start funding so that it would be able to benefit the community better, because the demographics that we serve would benefit more from a free program versus a private paying program. And that's all that I have. Oh, and in addition to what I sent, originally, I also heard back from a few more residents, and I have their names and information if that's needed.
Quick question before you leave. In addition to noise and injury, what was the third concern that you noted?
Liability. Liability, but it was said noise, injury, liability. They don't want any more fences put up, no playground outside, the cost to taxpayers, and no increase in taxes. That was all the stuff I got back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some time. Anyone else like to speak in support of this?
I would like to.
Okay.
My name is April Brogdon. I sit at 675 Spruce Court, Rural Hall, North Carolina. I'm about a half a mile from where they're zoning, St. James United Methodist Church. I am excited. I have a preschooler. He'd be five, and I think this would be good for him. What they're planning, feasible enough, feasible. It'd be something that I could use, something that would help me for after-school program and a daycare for him. So I'm really excited. I hope you all approve this. I'm excited, so I hope you all approve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Said none, and we'll turn to the opposition. Jean Gross?
My address, P.O. Box 271, 27045. I am opposed to this for a couple of reasons. My property goes right up to, within 15 yards, 20 yards, where the nursery and everything's going to be. going to be. And my wife and myself, we spend a lot of time out in our yard, working, our backyard backs up to it. And our concern, as it's already been mentioned in some places, is the noise situation. You know, I'm 75, and she's, well, I'm not going to give her age. But we both enjoy being outside, and she really loves, you know, the peace that we have there now. And it does bother me a little bit to the noise situation and property value. I don't know about that, but those are my main concerns, and that's one of the reasons, that's the reason I oppose.
Thanks, sir.
Are you adjacent? I apologize.
Excuse me, Mr. Sir.
Sorry about that. Are you an adjacent property owner?
Let him point out. Can you show us on the map here, sir?
Well, come back up here. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Would that be, would that also be like the Mildred Folk property? Mildred Folk, that's not...
Are you right beside the church?
I think he's the third house from the end on Bethania Street, on the north side of the property. So if you can see...
My property line is probably the corner of my property, I'm standing at the corner of my backyard property looking to the church. I'm probably within 30 yards of their property line. So my house is, there's nothing between me and looking straight to the church there. There's no, and that distance is about less than 50 yards from my corner of my house.
Your property, does your property touch the church's property?
It does not. Okay.
Gary, can you point at that third house from the end of Bethania, so you can show the board? I think that's, according to geodata, that's what shows up on the tax records. I believe that's...
Right there. Here's the railroad track. That's your house.
It's not even on the site plan.
That's not even on the site plan.
That's the dead end there to the railroad track.
This house here is Jason's, I believe, here. And my house is right across from me, straight across from me.
One of these three or four houses.
We're closed, we're in a neighborhood. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Johnny Idol?
My name is Johnny Idol. I live at 226 North Main Street, King, North Carolina. I'm representing my son. I couldn't be here. It's 138 Bethania Street, directly behind the church, next to the church. Yeah, and there's a privacy fence there also. It's been there for 20-some years. The church won't tear it down, because there's one corner, it's four foot. They say on their property, which it could be, but Andrew bought the house about six years ago knowing nothing like this was going on. Plus, the noise and privacy and the neighborhood, you know. And if you do pass it, I would like to, they could ask for a variance on the other end. They're asking for one on one end. They could ask it on the other end and leave the fence alone. And if comes down to it, my son would be willing to buy the four foot in order to keep his fence up. The fence is taken down, there's a tree, he's going to have to cut a tree down, a big expense to him. And we're going to go with eminent domain, something that's been there for 20 years, I think could stay. It's not, he's trying to take any way, thing away from the church, but he just wants his privacy fence left alone.
Can you clarify just a bit? So part of the fence is his and part of the fence is the church's, and you think the church wants to take it down?
The church doesn't own any defense, but the corner...
I misunderstood you there.
20-some years ago, there's a corner that, they say it's four foot on the church's property.
Four foot of the fence.
Four foot of the fence, it's one corner.
Right here is Mr. Idol's property. And four foot, he's got a fence that encroaches onto the church property about four feet. And that's part of the buffer yard there.
All the fence on the west.
It's a matter between the two property owners whether or not the church wants to continue to allow Mr. Idol's fence on their property.
If the church wanted to move the buffer yard, they could.
They could.
I'm just asking, would that still meet the requirements?
They could move it to the, they could move it to the left a little bit and stay away from that fence. That would be, they've got enough room to do that.
Okay, that was my question, there's enough room to do that.
And the site plan doesn't say that the fence is to be removed, it just shows that it is an encroachment. And that fence could go through the buffer yard. I mean, there's no requirement from the code standpoint of buffer yard installation that the fence would have to be removed.
What's the reason for removing the fence, do we know?
Well, before all this come about, he got a letter from a lawyer in Winston-Salem that if the fence was, that corner was four foot on them, if he didn't tear the fence down, they would. And that was it. And so he contacted the lawyer, and they didn't have a copy of the survey or anything, whoever they used, I can't recall the name. But it's been a quiet neighborhood. He's not trying to take anything away. He knew nothing about, the fence's been up for 20 years, knew nothing that, when he bought the property six years ago, at any of that property, fence was on the church's property.
Good question. Sure. If I remember correctly from viewing this site, that's a solid fence?
Yes.
So it is providing some buffer of noise and sight right now?
It would, yes, it does. That's the reason it's up there.
And is it in good enough repair it could be moved?
Well, if they keep pursuing it, it'll be moved, but there will be a fence up there one way or the other. It might be right ugly, once you've got it sort of a cocked way.
Thank you. I think one other possibility would be to ask the church if they'd be willing to add a condition to their rezoning to retain that fence.
Yeah, retain it within the buffer and not have to change the buffer, right?
Right.
I can see the church not wanting, they wanted to clean up an encroachment too.
But they've got to leave it's buffer, so it really... All right, we'll come back to that issue here when we get into the, after we conclude the public hearing, we can talk about the fence and probably some other issues we need to address. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is Jennifer Comer, is that correct?
Yes. Excuse me, hello, my name is Jennifer Comer. I live at 6911 Marshall Road, and I'm here for my mom, Dora Lee Schoutz. She lives on 125 Bethania Street. As you look around here, these are not children. The world does not consist of children only. My mom is 90. She's 90 years old. And it's been a peaceful and quiet neighborhood. And when I was a child, our whole family walked to that same building, to church. My mom, dad, my brother, and me, we walked through there every Sunday, till it got sold. So I was here last time, I just wanted to say, that she lives right across the road from the Morris's and also across from Andrew Idol, who is right up against that property. I'm opposed to any type of daycare we are or anything going in there. We don't need a daycare there. We like it just the way it is. Now, it's very peaceful and quiet. I'd like for it to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Marvin Morris?
Can you hold up a second? Just hold on. That's what she's doing. Okay, my dad signed in. Someone will speak for him. I got here late, I was parking. My name is Jason Morris.
Need your address, please, sir?
Yeah, so I'm the owner of 13...
Give me your address, please, sir.
P.O. Box 34, Rural Hall.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of 131 Bethania Street, Rural Hall, and my dad is owner of 136 Bethania Street. The 136 Bethania Street, it goes right up against the area where they're proposing to put the playground. I had some questions last time, no one was here to answer those. I understand is that they're just, they're putting the fence up, but they're not cutting the tree down. There's a tree on the end, so I'd like to understand about that because there's some protected, federal protected birds that live there that hunt in that area. I don't know if that could be a danger for the kids once they put that there. There's also some easements. The, you know, my family's always had an easement at Gross there, where we walk through the property to get to like to the Rural Hall Park. Sometimes we'll use our vehicle to get through there when they have special events like the parade or, you know, the railroad has cut off access. The church also goes through my property sometimes or touches a little bit when they park in that field area where they're putting the, or where they're proposing to put the fences at. In addition to, there's also an easement, which I'm not sure if it was accounted for, but the, there's a single pole power transmission lines. And my understanding is, any transmission lines, if you put a fence in, you have to be at least a minimum of 25 feet away from those transmission lines. So the Duke Power has to have at least a way to get in there to work on those lines. So that's additional consideration as far as where they put the proposed fence. Both myself and my dad, we were against this proposal. You know, the main things is, like what everybody's already said, you know, the increased noise, the increased traffic, and then, of course, the additional liabilities, you know, when we mow out there, you know, they're not putting up a protective fence, they're just putting up a chain link fence. So, you know, something could get thrown in and one of the children could get hurt, and then we would be liable for that. So, so those are, you know, some of the things that, as far as, you know, why we propose that. And plus too, you know, most everybody in that neighborhood, you know, works different hours as well. So, anyway, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, correct, the public hearing closed. We want to talk about this fence. Who's here to represent the church? Ms. Springs, would this be you?
Yes.
Okay, come back down. Is it your intent to take the privacy fence down?
No. When I was working with Mr. Randall Kell, it was brought to our attention. We already knew that the fence was on our property. The fence used to go in front, you can't see me pointing, but it used to go in front of that tree, like on the other side of the tree that's now on the inside of the fence, which is how we know that it was, how we knew that it was on our property now. And so we had been working to try to get the fence moved for a while. And it was brought to our attention by the church, well, higher-ups in the church, the United Methodist District, that we should contact a lawyer because we get free, like legal advice and that type of thing. And that's why he received a letter from the lawyer versus from us, because when we send it, we don't really get a response. And so we just decided to go with the lawyer. But that's something that was just brought to my attention by Mr. Kell, that it was on our property and that with the buffers and all those types of things that I don't quite understand, but that it might, that property might be needed to get rezoned or however that works. But it was not our intention to tear the fence down.
So if they could leave it in your buffer, you probably want him to maintain it if he wants the fence up, right?
I mean, I know he mentioned that he would pay for the land, and that was also an option that's been brought up before in the past, and that's something that we would revisit. I mean, if that's what he wants to do. But yes, if, I mean, if he wants to keep the fence up, it would need to be maintained as long as it's not interfering with the rezoning process and what I'm trying to establish inside my church, I have no problem with him leaving the fence up.
Good, thank you.
Oh, that's it.
Any other?
Well, I was just curious about the issue that was brought up about Duke Power and the...
Easement.
Do you know anything about that?
I'm not aware of anything like that. Again, that could be Duke Power's regulation, but it does look like, according to the site plan, there are at least two power poles in the back portion of that property, just behind the church. But again, that'd be Duke Power's regulation as far as any kind of setbacks from that.
It does seem, and I know we're looking at buffer yards and things like that, so this case certainly brings to light some of those issues and how much sound, sight, privacy buffers provide. And this is a very clear case with that. I guess I'm more concerned with not having the buffer on that right side, and since we can't determine what the zoning board of adjustment's going to do. But it does seem like there's an option of a solid fence that would do a good job of blocking sight, sound, things being thrown over into the church area and all of that, particularly if the church can't give away that driveway to the tight buffer that's required there, that we might get an accommodation from the church to put something up along there that would provide some kind of privacy to this area. The other thing that I'm very familiar with is, for whatever reason, you all have decided to, I guess, contract with a private group to do this and not do it within the church, because I guess the church has the right to do this type of activity, and I'm very familiar with churches doing that kind of activity. So to me, that this case isn't really about children or noise or activity, but it's about how can we maintain the kind of privacy and whatever kinds of concerns are with the neighbors when there's a change. And we, I don't think we would have as much option with this if it was just the church doing it. But certainly, that is a feature that any neighbor has to be aware of when they are located next to a church. And I'm assuming this church goes back to about the time these homes were built as well.
Actually, my concern is more with the buffer yards next to the play area with that, with only 15 feet. What, 26 children?
Yes.
That's what I remember. I think of myself on my porch or even just inside my house, 15 feet away, there's 26 children playing. That's a lot of noise. It's good noise, I mean, it makes you smile sometimes to hear them, but if it's not part of your, what you're trying or planning to do, I think it can be disruptive. So that tightness between the actual play area and someone's home concerns me. And there's a definition in the different type, like type 2, the purpose of it, it's not a total screening, correct? It's a...
A type 2 of 15-foot would provide for each 100 linear feet is two deciduous trees, eight primary evergreen plants, which are like cedars or Leyland cypresses, that have to be six feet tall in installation, and then 20 supplemental evergreen shrubs per one...
But it's, as far as separating uses, it's to screen more than...
It says it's a medium-density screening designed to block visual contact and create spatial separation between adjacent uses.
Okay. So it's not a complete blocking, which would be a higher-level screen with that. I think that's very close to someone's home with that level of screening with it. And I don't, was it specified what type of fence there's going to be around the play area?
It just happened to have a four-foot security fence.
Okay.
Of course, if the planning board wants to recommend a, a more, a stronger buffer, that's up to you to...
that's up to you to decide to do that.
And let me also refresh my memory from when we talked about this before. So if the church was doing this daycare center, not an outside organization, there would be no conversation.
That's correct.
So, the question is, when a third party does it, then there are certain rezoning requirements that need to be met. So the concerns that, most of the concerns that were raised have to do with noise and privacy. A few other things, but mainly noise and privacy. Is that accurate?
Fair assessment.
And so, the fact that a third party is doing this doesn't change the amount of noise and privacy, right? Just want to make sure I understand.
That's true.
Any other comments?
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Younger for approval. Is there any discussion?
Would the church concede to put up privacy fences along those areas? I don't know who has authority to speak for the Methodist church.
Well, it's kind of strange, because it is my project, but I'm also a member of the church, and I serve on the administrative council for the church. And so, as I stated before, whatever it takes to make this happen, we will do. So if it's a chain link fence, if it's solid wooden fence, whatever kind of fence is required is what's gonna happen. And then, you know, like, with me being a member of the church, as well as being a part of the community, and as part of being a private organization, it all just kind of intertwines in together.
So, you wouldn't be adverse to adding to this, putting up a six-foot solid fence along the open sides that run sort of zigzagging?
Along the north side and the east side.
The north and the east.
The north and the east. Where you abut residences?
Um, yes, I guess. I don't know. Is the nor, you talking about right here where the white buildings are?
Let's, yeah, let's show her so she understands.
Mr. Davis, can you come make a contribution to pay for this fence, I think?
Okay.
So, you know, where, what we're, I think what George is talking about is trying to give a, where the play area, the fenced-in play area-
Uh huh.
Where the, where that part of the fence abuts a residence, so-
I don't know what scale there is.
But it's 31 feet on the east side.
Yeah, you were pointing it out back on the map, right?
59 along there.
Okay, so, make sure we understand.
Yeah.
All right, that property line, then coming down, down here as well, coming down that line as well, is that what you want?
Well, are we talking about just fencing the play area?
Exactly.
Yeah, we're talking about fencing the play area.
That section of the play area that-
So, come inside that.
Between the play area and the-
That trap is, yeah, there we go.
Type of fence.
Right there, stop right there.
So, you're saying make that a solid fence?
Yeah. Well, we're just exploring the possibility, but maybe the north side of it and the east side of it. Maybe something like that to give a little visual, and that, you know, it's a solid fence, it will cut down on the noise somewhat, too.
Just keep in mind, you're gonna have building, plants, wooden fence, so there's gonna be kind of this-
Missionary.
Just throw that out there.
Right. Yeah, that's true.
Make sure you know what you want them to do.
I mean, what, does that seem reasonable?
The other option you have is increasing the density of the plantings.
Go with a type 4 or something like that.
In that section.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
Do you understand what, why don't you explain that?
No, I was saying, rather than putting up a fence, because that is a good point, you're gonna have an alleyway almost, 15 foot in between. If you increase the density of the plantings, as opposed to putting up a fence, that would increase your separation.
Yeah. So, if you made, if you went to-
We still would have to have a fence for the playground.
Exactly.
You're saying, like, behind that fence, put more plants?
Right.
Instead of a type 2, a type 3, or?
Yeah. What's it, 3?
A 15-foot type 3 is eight. The only difference between that and the type 2 is, the type 2 is eight primary evergreen screens, which are really the most effective part of your visual, low-level screening. The type 3 is 18 primary evergreen.
How many?
18, per 100 feet, as opposed to eight. So that, a type 3 is a pretty dense buffer.
Pretty strong.
Yeah, type 3 buffer.
But leave her four-foot fence. She doesn't have to do, do the same fence you were gonna do to begin with.
So, would you be willing to plant 18 of these evergreens?
We're just gonna plant eight, anyway.
Yeah, right, yeah, 10 more.
Per 100 feet.
Per 100 feet.
Right, I'm sorry, yeah. And she's looking at 73, 80, yeah.
Is that enough space to plant 18? Yeah, 15-foot is the minimum width, so that has been determined, that we can, you can fit all that planting in there.
Yeah. So, it'd be 10 more trees, and then you can have whatever kind of fence around your play area that you want. So you would specify that?
Um, yes, if that's-
Yes, 10 more?
You know, I think my only concern now is adding an undue expense to the church. You know, I think, whether you have eight evergreens or 18, the neighbors are not gonna be happy that it gets approved. So, it's really taxing the church with 10 additional trees going to ease the concerns of the neighborhood.
But, me, I agree, you don't want to necessarily cause that, but the church will have income from the lease of the building.
Understood, but-
Which is what is different, which is why we have, why we can have the case.
I just think the cost is unnecessary.
That's why I wanted to remind us all that if the church was operating the childcare center-
We wouldn't be having-
We wouldn't have this conversation.
Church could just put her own salary to run the daycare center.
But, to me, that doesn't remove that the case is here.
Right.
And there are other-
We've solved some of the problems using thicker buffers. Yeah, that is true. Yep.
To me, I mean, to me, I mean, if she, I heard a feeble yes.
Yeah, I'm thinking about cost, like he said, I remember Mr. Kell telling me how much eight trees would cost, and then you're talking about 10 more, that's why I was kind of like, you know-
Did we determine that it is 100 feet? Is there 10 more, or is even 100-foot there? What's the length?
59 feet over there on that side. 59, and I can't tell what it is there.
Gary, point out the dimensions on that line right there.
This line here is 80 feet. So, that's-
And that's the area you want to, right?
That's the only line we're talking about. We're not talking about the line coming southward.
Well, I was, originally, I was talking about that, what, 59 feet coming south? Where the type 2 buffer was in there?
So, that's about 100, that's about 50 there, so 18 evergreen plants per that area, and then nine evergreen plants per that area.
18 and 9, 27.
Plus your supplemental shrubs and your tree. So, you're talking about three, about three deciduous trees, maybe four deciduous trees, and then what, 27 evergreens?
27 evergreens instead of eight.
In that area alone, it's still-
Eight per 100.
Eight per 100. So, they were still-
Can I throw out one option?
What's that, this mess?
Oh.
That's the thing.
Yeah.
So, beefing up those evergreen plantings behind that building right there is not providing any more screening, because that building's already blocking your view.
Right.
Right? So what about, what about that line right there? Because there, there really is nothing that blocks that view. To me, that seems like a more effective use of those plantings, rather than putting them in front of the building that's already blocking your view.
And you've got a fence on the other side of those buildings.
That's 60 feet, is what we're talking about.
Correct, 59.22 feet.
So, that'd be six additional, six additional. Do you want to amend your motion, or not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion that I seconded, I don't want all that in it either.
So, right now, the motion is to approve it-
As it is.
As it is, with the understanding that they're gonna let the fence stay on, that's on their property, the one fence we were talking about. She says she would let it.
Do you want that as a condition, or just?
Yeah, I mean, if we're willing to-
Yeah, you're willing to volunteer to not tear down the fence, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I would incorporate-
I just, I think if, we've had discussion about what they could or couldn't do, if it was a church or if it was someone else. And, you know, churches are integral parts of the communities, they always have been very valuable, but the effect of the 26 children playing is going to be the same, whether it is a church or a private person. And that's what my concern is, in terms of not doing some additional buffering for doing that with it, so.
But we've not increased the effect of the 26 kids because it's private.
Correct.
So, yeah. All right, so-
Motion's on the floor. Public hearing is closed.
Anyone care to hear what?
Let's go through with this motion.
Come on, Mr. Morris, I'll listen to what you have to say. Come, well, come up here and tell us, okay?
As you're designing or figuring out buffers, if you're gonna approve it, that one area, you've got the two poles, it actually goes over the actual playground, and that power line is pretty low-hanging, so that actually could prevent, be a danger potentially. But, the access on that side, you have to have enough access so the Duke Power trucks can get in there to services those power lines. So, whatever you do as far as buffers, you gotta keep that, have that in consideration.
They'll have to get permits to cover that, so we don't get involved with that permitting. I mean, that's something that-
No, what I'm saying is, if they put trees or stuff there, then that blocks the Duke Power's access, and that powers the houses there. So, if they have a problem, I'm just saying that it's-
Duke Power takes, knows how to take care of their, I mean-
You can't, I mean, the regulations states, like, trees can only be so high, especially the power lines. So, anyway, that was only, like I said, you're supposed to be 25 feet away, that's the only thing. You gotta have access. If you put trees there, they won't have access. It's a very tight space.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, we have a motion for approval with the fence remaining that's there now. And we have a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Bryan, Ms. Smith, opposed. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the, let's see.
Where are we now? Number eight.
Next presentation. Next zoning case is W. 3340, and our petitioner is Three Properties LLC, and the site is 1.97 acres, located on the west side of Peters Creek Parkway, and the east side of Fourth Street, south of Business 40. The request is a special use rezoning from RM18 and RSQ to RMUS, residential unlimited densities for the multifamily uses that I have listed there. Property's located within the Growth Management Area 2, urban neighborhood, shown in the pink there, it's also along the Peters Creek Parkway growth corridor. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there, highlighted in yellow. It currently has eight residential structures on there. It's located, again, on the west side of Peters Creek Parkway, the east side of Fourth Street, just south of Business 40, you have the BB&amp;T Ballpark, just located off the image here, and it also is in the proximity of Peters Creek, and some of the Peters Creek floodplain goes into the property here, as you can see. There's RSQ zoning around to the north, and the other properties along Fourth Street have highway business zoning located directly to the east and directly to the south. Aerial photographs showing the development pattern of the subject property, primarily single-family homes located along Fourth Street that have been converted over the years to duplexes and quadruplexes. This is a South Central Area Plan, it was adopted in 2014. I'm gonna have a closer-up image here, but just to give you the broader context, you see the blue in the upper left here, this is Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center, Business 4421 here, just north of the site. The site is right here in the central portion, and the green is recreational area for the BB&amp;T Ballpark. Red would be commercial land use recommendation along Peters Creek Parkway. So, this property is really located in between three neighborhoods. You have West End to the north, West Salem to the east, and Ardmore directly to the west. Zooming in here a little bit closer, these colors represent different land use recommendations from the South Central Area Plan. The recommended land use is for continued residential in this area, based primarily upon the existing zoning pattern. The darker brown is more dense, that's about RM18 zoning. The rest of it is, again, consistent with the RSQ zoning there. So, moderate and low and intermediate density residential is basically what's recommended on the area plan now. We did some calculations there, based upon that acreage of about two acres, and so that equates out to about 15 units per acre, or around 30 dwelling units on these two acres, to max out at least what is recommended in the area plan. The proposal is for significantly higher than that density, it's about 73 units per acre, a total of 144 units on these two acres. These images are taken on-site, this is the northernmost properties there that were, have been included in the site. This may look familiar to you, you saw this request very similar. This blue house was not in your request, that was continued from the April and May Planning Board meeting, and then it was withdrawn this past, right before your June Planning Board meeting. But, the only difference really is, is that they added this lot here, and this is where the proposed street would tee into Fourth Street and connect into Peters Creek Parkway, which I'll show you in just a moment. And then, again, this whole neighborhood was brought in, most all of it, in the fall, and that was withdrawn at the council meeting in November. That included a mixed-use commercial component, as well as multifamily. So, it's all these properties over here on the left, these two multifamily buildings are the RM18 portion. Looking across the street and north towards the West End neighborhood, and more directly across the street. This is out on Peters Creek Parkway, looking into the subject property, and looking north, subject property being to the left. This is the proposed site plan, again, very similar to what you saw early in the spring. You have Fourth Street on the left, New Public Street here on the north, northern end of the site, and Peters Creek Parkway located to the right. It's a four- and five-story apartment building with a four-story deck located here, attached to it, with a small courtyard in the very center there. It's good building placement, pulled up to all three street frontages, which we certainly applaud, in the Growth Management Area 2, in a pedestrian-oriented fashion, sidewalks on all sides as well. You can see that there is some floodplain of Peters Creek that encroaches into the site, and they will have to obtain the necessary permits in order to build in the floodplain. It is a big building. It's about 300 feet long, 45 to 55 feet tall. The front image is from Peters Creek Parkway, that's the five-story portion there, and then the fourth story, Fourth Street portion there is about four stories, again, about 50 feet. So, it's a fairly massive building, really, particularly compared to the homes that are around in this area. This is a 3D concept showing an approximation of what the building will look like in its context. The upper-left image has Peter Creek, Peters Creek Parkway here with a new street, the proposed building, and the residential structures located around it there. So, again, this is, this is not exact, but it's approximation, and it shows that this is really a significantly bigger building than what we have out here now. So, from a density standpoint, as I said earlier, it's significantly more dense than what the area plan recommends. This is unlimited density, it's about 73 units per acre, so that's four or five times what the RM 8, or the 15 units per acre that the area plan supports. And then again, the massing and the scale, I mean, this is not just a slight variation from what the area plan recommends from a density standpoint, it's a significant departure, and then you have the scale adding on to that. There are positives, though, as I said, it's in Growth Management Area 2, it will provide for high-density infill, close to the ballpark, close to downtown, on a growth corridor that is served with sidewalks and transit. And it's good building in place, good building placement, pedestrian-oriented, pulled up to the street. However, as I mentioned, it's significantly higher density than what is recommended in the area plan. And the height, the massing of the proposed five-story structure is out of character with the existing Fourth Street streetscape. It would add additional traffic, about four times the traffic that could be expected under the current zoning. And approval of this request could also set a precedent for additional, additional development in this area that is not consistent with the area plan. So, staff's recommendation is for denial, and the request, the site plan does meet minimum UDO requirements. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What's the density of the Link Apartments close to ballpark?
Just up the street?
Yeah.
I do not know. That, that's a similar, I do have a cross-section here after that. That, this is just up, up the street, so it's somewhat of a similar situation. This building is not as long as the other building that we're talking about, this is about 250 feet long, this is up on Park Circle. Similar height, about 50 feet as opposed to 20 or 25 feet here with the single-family homes. But, one distinction over here, th- this rezoning was consistent with the area plan, it actually recommended this all the way over to the ballpark for comprehensive redevelopment and urban mixed-use development. So, this is still in Growth Management Area 2, but it was right across Peters Creek Parkway.
Where is that on the, on this, this zoning map? Where is?
It's just, it's just further north, so.
Just north of this property?
Yeah, it's.
Two blocks, a block?
This property is off other side of Business 40.
Yeah.
And up and around. And I believe it is in GMA 1.
You think it's GMA 1, not GMA 2?
It, where BB&amp;T Ballpark is in the Link Apartments, that whole rezoning area to PBS, I was just looking at the staff report, there was, that was part of the request to put that in GMA 1 when that was, when that happened.
Thank you. Alright, I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
With the, with the floodplain area there, is there apartments that are in that, or is the floodplain area under the parking garage?
It's both.
Okay.
Yeah, the floodplain goes underneath.
Okay, and is that a resolved issue?
It's my understanding from Matthew Osborne that that is resolvable, he did not see any major issues with obtaining those permits, but those are state and federal permits, so.
Okay, this is a public hearing, first person signed up in support, Dan Donovan? You go, okay? Okay, sure. We've got 12 minutes, you take it any way you want to. Okay?
We'll move right along, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Lawson Newton, I'm an attorney here in town with Craig Jenkins Law Firm, my address is 110 Oakwood Drive, 300 Winston-Salem, 27103. As succinctly as I can, let me just point out a few of what I perceive we, it's easy to look at the negatives of anything, but I think there's, it's important for this board to recognize the positives of this type of a project. First of all, the, the obvious increased tax basis, a 15 to $20 million project that would go into there providing housing in that area, the creation of jobs in running that building and having it staffed, probably 25 to 30 jobs that we know of at this juncture. The developer has targeted that 15% of these units roughly, 22 units would be effectively subsidized housing, which means to the extent that, that the rental price of those units would be within 15% up or down of what the current rent rates are for that area for the single-family or multifamily units that are located on the street now. The removal of those subsidized units, which the developer feels that this is important, and I do too, but the, the removal of those units reduces the density to 61 units per acre. Interesting that you note, I think, Mr. Lamb, you noted that the, the additional parking, or the additional apartment complex that is close to that, the, the area we're talking about, is right up close to the ballpark, that is 12, roughly 1,200 feet from what we're talking about, okay? So, it, it's about as far as a really good golfer might be able to hit a, a long drive, I guess, but it, it is close to that, and the density at, at that particular location is substantial, and, and really, it's just about 60, I think it's 62 units per acre at that location, 1,200 feet, 1,200 something feet away. So, we, we certainly recognize the, the concern and appreciate the concern of increased traffic issues, but I, I want to reserve and get out of this podium and away from it so that somebody that knows a whole lot more about the traffic matter can, can step up and address that for you. But, I, I think that those two items are really pertinent, the, the density issue and, and the, the traffic, and we'll address the traffic here in just a moment. I think it's important for this board to note that the business owners up and down Peters Creek Parkway, two and owner are in support of this particular project, they realize that that brings in warm bodies into the downtown area and close to their businesses. Furthermore, we have petitions that are signed by the, what would be effectively the remaining residents on that street, not two or three streets away, but I mean, the ones that are right there, the, the people that you saw are the remaining houses there who have no issue with this and are in favor of it. So, some of those, a good number of those, if not all, have signed those petitions. I, I would just say that, that this particular project addresses a couple of overall concerns, some of which would include some subsidized housing, and I mentioned that that's 22 of those units we would like to see in, in that range, and amazingly enough, the displaced number of tenants, none of those people that are there are owners, they're tenants, but of those 22, we've already made plans, the developer has ma- had made plans and has made plans to relocate them to spots that are equal or less rent, and then should they choose to come back, then obviously they would receive some priority in that respect about coming back to that particular area should they so choose. So, overall, I think we, we need to make sure that we don't just summarily say, "Well, it's too much traffic and density's wrong, see ya." I, I think we need to take a look at the positives of this particular project, and I would urge you to do so. I would like to address the traffic matter, and, and hopefully that can be addressed in a little more specificity, and I'm certainly open to questions from the board.
Yeah, Mr. Newton, I had a question about the subsidized units that you mentioned. Is that something that you would put in written form that would be legally binding, or is this just your saying that that's your intention?
No, I think, I think if, if you look at what that, the thought process is to have units in the project that would afford the capability for lesser rental, okay? They're not, I don't guess they're technically subsidized when you think in the terms of what we, we might think in the overall thought process subsidized, that is, somebody helping to pay the rent. They're just reduced rent, okay, for those units. Now, whether we'd be willing to put that in writing, I think so, and, and, you know, that, that is certainly something that is in the plan already and was in the plan irrespective of density, that is, to have some units there that would not be in the rental price range that would be comparable to the units that we would put in there otherwise, and the ones right up the street, which are, like I say, they're kind of borderline. I, I forgot to mention something, the, the length of the building that is up the street, some 1,200 feet away, when you go down First Street, I believe it is, that's longer down First Street than our building, okay? The, the portion of that building, you know, up the street there, the Link Apartments there, that is facing Peters Creek, that's shorter than our building, but their length on First Street is, is longer than our building. But, indirect answer, yes, that is something that we would be willing to, to, to do, and, and I think can be, I won't speak for, for the city's legal staff, but I think we could make that a legally binding arrangement. Yes, man?
I think for the board to be able to consider that, it would have to be offered by the petitioner as a condition.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my question was related to the, to those 22 units as well, and I like what you said about the people who will be displaced will be given priority. So, my question is, how many units would be displaced?
Well.
No, not how many would be available, how many will be displaced that are currently there? Is that the same number?
I, I think it's 20.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 22 units and there would be.
So, that's a magic number, thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, kind of a equal number there.
Okay.
Right.
But, substitute housing has been found, not necessarily in this apartment complex the way I understood what you said.
That is correct. The, the developer's gone out and already made arrangements, you know, and obviously we, it would be contingent on the project going through, but they've made arrangements to have these places. Now, not, a lot of these tenants may say, "I don't wanna, I don't wanna stay, I may go somewhere else," that, that's kind of a characteristic. These are, some are long-term residents, Mr. Lamb, some of these folks that are in there have been in these particular homes for a long time.
Right.
And so, the idea would be, you know, if we're gonna quote, and this is a bad word, but if we're gonna uproot them for a period of time, we at least want to give them the opportunity to go somewhere close and come back, you know, and, and not experience sticker shock, if that makes sense.
You also mentioned the, the residents and the business owners in support, do you have, did you say that there was a petition, or you just said you talked to them?
Yeah, we, we, the developer went basically door-to-door with the, both the residents and with the business owners up and down Peters Creek, and business owners are certainly in favor of it, and that, that stands to reason because, you know, the more people they have in an area, then the more likely it is that their businesses will thrive, which is something that Peters Creek needs desperately. I would tell you, you know, when you look at the pictures right now, you know, this is going to be what Winston-Salem will look like coming east and west. You just put the picture up now, what it looks like, and then you put a picture up of what we would intend to put there, I'm much happier to, to see that particular picture, what would be there. I think it presents a wonderful larger picture of what we have here in, in town, so.
Thanks.
And if there aren't any more questions, I would like the traffic, the traffic.
I have one question.
To address that, yes, sir?
So, what are the, the rates for this particular?
You're gonna have to give me a half a second. The projected price of the units would run, depending on two-bedroom to a, three-bedroom, would be about 1450 to 1750. Okay, now, that's not the, that's not the subsidized units, but that is the ones that we would market at that particular rate, and of course, those plans would depend on bedrooms and, you know, perhaps other amenities that, that you might put in on some of the higher-end ones.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you have someone else?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
How much time we have?
About seven and a half minutes.
Okay.
Okay, I should be able to do, do well on that. My name's Jay Clapp with Ramy Kempin Associates. My office location is 621 Jonestown Road, Suite 221, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27103. You know, I'd certainly have to, you know, I'll agree with Gary, I mean, with going to 144 units compared to what the 30, I mean, there's gonna be a significant increase in traffic, but I don't know if I'd go as far as to say there's gonna be a significant impact of what's being proposed to be provided in, in addition as far as roadway improvements. Way back when, when we were looking, when they were looking at as a mixed-use development, I was brought on to prepare a traffic study and coordinated with NC DOT and the Winston-Salem DOT on, as far as study area and analysis, and coordinated with them all the way through the process, and met with them multiple times to discuss what we were looking at, and that's where the right-in, right-out came about, from Peters Creek Parkway to Fourth Street. We also took into account all the improvements that are currently being looked at with the new modification to the interchange at Peters Creek Parkway, it's gonna be provided as part of the Business 40 project, a- as well as the improvements that are being done at Academy Street. So, based on that, we developed, came up with our recommendations, submitted our report, NC DOT, Winston-Salem DOT concurred with our findings, and, and that was with the full build-out, the mixed-use hotel apartments and everything. There's been no changes to the improvements with this development. They're providing the same amount of improvements with just the 144 units as they were planning to provide with the whole full build-out of the mixed-use development. So, they're picking accommodate that amount of traffic and satisfy NC DOT, Winston-Salem DOT, then there should not be any issues with accommodating the amount of traffic that's being generated by 144 apartments. And you're looking at probably, on average, for about 144 apartments, you know, you're looking at almost 100 trips total during the PM peak hour, which is the heaviest peak. Now, that's in and out, and that doesn't take into account any transit use that people may use with the routes that currently run on Peters Creek Parkway, and if there's a transit stop located nearby. So, about 100 vehicles added in the peak hour, you're looking at about, on average, about one car every 36 seconds, two cars every minute maybe added during that peak hour. So, you know, it's pretty spread out over the peak hour, and I think most of it would probably be in and out of downtown based on the location, so I can certainly see the transit pedestrian and with the bike lanes that are currently being proposed as part of the additional improvements along Peters Creek Parkway, that you'd definitely get a lot of different multi-modal transportation with this development. But, I'd be glad to answer any questions, I know I kind of went over real quick, but.
How, how would you get to the ballpark not on, in a car? Is there a, I just can't recall what kind of pedestrian access and bike lane.
Well, there's going to be a sidewalk along Peters Creek Parkway, an eight, eight-foot wide sidewalk, and that goes up over Business 40 to the multi-use path, and then that will connect over eastward to the ballpark.
Thank you.
Now, the last time we heard this, there was a considerable amount of discussion about the traffic, and there was concern about it, but what you're saying is there's no change with that, so there's no solution at this point to traffic heading north?
No, there's been no change to the improvements that were being provided, they're providing the same improvements that were being proposed or recommended under the full build-out of the condition for this, for just the apartment use. So, it's, for any improvements that were identified in the original study we did, that included everything on this parcel.
Right.
They have not reduced any improvements. There'll still be a right turn lane on Peters Creek, and the right-in, right-out, there'll be a leftover provided onto Fourth Street because of the SKU, and people will go down to Academy and make a U-turn. And like I said, I mean, based on our distributions and everything, through coordination with Connie in the past, I mean, worst-case scenario, you're probably looking at about 20 cars that may be heading north in the morning if they were to go up to the downtown taking Fourth Street up.
That's your calculation?
Well, that's about 35% of the traffic.
What do you base that on? 35% of the people will be going north and, and 65 will be going south?
No, that's about 35% going out, I mean, some would be u- accessing Pe- Business 40 through the interchange, some people would be traveling south on Peters Creek Parkway. It's, we develop our traffic projections based on traffic patterns, coordinate with NC DOT, Winston-Salem. I know there would have been some questions about distribution. I know there had been some questions about distributions that we were looking at in the original, so we went back and actually, okay, well, if you take all this traffic that we had assumed going into downtown from the residential standpoint and added it to Fourth Street, how much of an impact would that be? Because I know they were looking at potential traffic calming measures if it met the thresholds of the city of possibilities of doing some traffic calming measures along Fourth Street, where it, at that point, and Connie can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it would actually have triggered any of the traffic calming thresholds, and that was under full build-out conditions, and now we're actually just at the 144 units, a lot smaller development. So it wouldn't come...
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to think through the logic. I mean, part of what I'm hearing is that people want to locate closer to downtown, theoretically closer to job, closer to amenities and things like that, but then you're coming up with a calculation of only 35% going north, and I would think it would be, if anything, probably flipped, it would be 65% going north and 35% wanting to leave town to work or play or something like that. I mean, in fact, I would guess higher, but I'm trying to figure out how you came up with your percentages when you were calculating it, what kind of logic? Did you look at lengths and say, "This percent of lengths does this," or...
Now, I will say, these are based on the old study, so I mean, it included like hotel and...
Oh, if it was mixed retail, okay.
So it was mixed. Now, I'll give you this, let's say if we were to say 100%, worst case, would go up North Street.
Yeah.
You're less than 60 cars in the morning peak hour. So that's one every 60 seconds, one every minute...
Yeah.
On average, and that's heading out to downtown. I think if you're coming from downtown, you would probably come down Peters Creek, turn right into the apartments, but worst case, you're probably looking on average about one car every minute being added to Fourth Street. And that's 100% of this apartment complex, to give you an idea if you're looking at it that way.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Clapp? All right, thank you, sir. Still a little time left, if you want to like to speak in support of this. How much time we got left?
About four and a half minutes.
Okay.
I'm Daniel Donovan. I live at 1028 Willow Lake Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27106. And in support of the project, let me just say about the people that we're relocating. I've talked to each, I'd say, not each one of them, because a lot of them are fit for us, the people that I've talked to that we relocate, I've made a moral commitment to at least try to get them back into these apartments once they're completed. The case point being the price point which we set the prices of, of course, are subject that they couldn't make, that's the real world. So what would, number one, we set a price point of like 1450, 1750, something like that, but it, as the case in most apartments of this nature, once you start your marketing, you'll find those price points drop. For the real, you've got, you've got to be able to fill the units. So subsequently, I looked at a price point that dropped probably about $1,100 a unit as far as the low side, as far as one bedroom, and up to maybe 1650 on the high side. But the other, the other point is, in finding these people places to go, I talked to them about, especially about a couple of elderly people, about 65, 75 years old, talking about not wanting to move. So we have made a commitment to them to actually move into this new location, move them back into the new apartments, and give them a rent that was within 10% of what they, 15% of what they were paying previously. I felt like that was, that was the first thing to do for them. Couple that with the fact that we're trying to make the entire area look better. Now, as far as the standpoint of petitioners, I'm the petitioner and Mr. Crawford is the seller, so I'm in the contract to buy the entire area there. But the bottom line is, is that we're simply trying to make a better place people live in. We're trying to meet a need for apartments. Look at the national geographic, I'm a national demographics that we've got this area here. We find that we have a tremendous need for apartments of this nature. If it were not so, I couldn't have gotten the investors to back. So the bottom line is that we're thoroughly committed, we have a good schedule, we have tremendous support. But the problem is, is some of the density requirements, like you've heard the transportation answer, but some of the density requirements, the density of the apartments, the Link Apartments directly behind my office, I think it's 71 per acre, is that right, Karen?
It's around 68, 69 units per acre.
Well, based upon what you've got printed, it's like 71, 70.6 or something. But ours is like 73, but if you take off the subsidized unit, you're looking at about 66, so 66 units per acre. But the bottom line is, we're not tied distinctly to that density. The only caveat, that is, that we've got a lot of hoops to jump through. We have to reclaim a flood zone area. We have to plant aquifers that will allow storm considerations and allow storm regulations to be met. We're having to meet additional requirements in regard to right-of-way, is that right, Gary?
Yes, 10 feet along Fourth Street.
In other words, we have the right-of-way subsequently squeezed in and took up some of the area that was used as far as standpoint trying to utilize the development. But that said, I just think it'd be a good development to see. I do. Questions?
Mr. Donovan, does Mr. Crawford, I mean, when he rents to folks in there, I mean, I'm still trying to understand this, I thought it was 10 to 15% of where you were going to rent the buildings, that it was going to be 10 to 15% less, but do you know what the standard rent is for a one-bedroom along Fourth Street right now?
I'd take a guess, Mr. Crawford knows more than that, I'd take a guess about 600 to 680, Mr. Crawford, can you answer that for us, please?
Whatever their rent is, it includes all the utilities, mites, heat, gas, and water.
And apartments.
700, I think, or whatever. Maybe it's just different for each building, or each building is different.
Let me tell you what I view.
Yeah.
Because I didn't, I didn't get into Mr. Crawford's business.
Okay.
I just assumed it was $680 a month.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what I worked on as far as standpoint of basing my pro formas back into the investors and telling them exactly what's going to happen dollar-wise.
Thank you.
I had another question related to that. So for these, what you're calling subsidized units, would that last just for the period of time that those tenants live there, or are you talking about setting aside those units indefinitely for this rental, this level of rent?
My pro formas set aside indefinitely, because, let me share this with you if I could. We're setting up for all the people at LEED that we relocate to come back in. I dare say that they all won't come back in. There'll be a few that don't want to come back in. So the idea is that saying, "Well, we're not going to put those up for subsidized housing" is wrong. So what we intend to do is keep those units available in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
How many of those were, I'm really, not that this is a big thing for me, but I think this is a big consideration for some of you, and I want to make sure I'm, I want to make sure I understand what you're committing to. You're committing to...
15%.
15% of your total units?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And they, and you're going to try and target that rent at about, in today's dollars, 700 bucks or something like that?
Something along that line, very close. And give me, give me the break now to 15%, 10% within that.
Well, 15...
So it may be 750.
Yeah, so 15% of 140-some units is whatever it is. How much is that?
Well, he stated 22 units.
He said 22.
22, I'm sorry.
I think it's 22.
So 22 units are going to...
The game is playing with me as a person, and I've been in this business many decades.
Yeah.
It's to be fair.
Yeah.
If I'm relocating 22 people, first of all, I need to take care of those 22 people.
Right, right.
Okay?
Right.
Secondly, the, notwithstanding the need for subsidized housing, as time goes on and we relocate anyone, we're going to make sure that those people that we relocate, we're going to have some kind of subsidized housing for them in some of our units.
Let me ask one additional question. There's an adult establishment at the bottom of this. Do you have a solution? I mean, under our ordinance, we don't allow adult establishments right next to residential.
We have...
Do you have a solution for that?
We've got a nine-foot retaining wall going between that property and our property. I don't know, you know, we'll take that wall up to at least five foot above the ground level that we're utilizing. I don't know anything else we can do. I mean, you know, if, share it with me if you have something, I simply don't.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Paul, from a legal standpoint, this thing, using the term subsidized housing, but how does that contractually work? If he's going to do it in perpetuity, there's got to be something, and you can't just say it's based on $700 a month, well, it's got to be some percentage of rates in the community. How does that work?
Well, I think the wording would need to be worked out and checked with our attorney's office. Yeah, I think, I mean, if you pegged it to a certain amount, then what happens 10 years, 15 years from now? So it would probably have to be based on something else, but I don't know that we could figure that out right here, but if he, if they're committing to add a condition to that, we could probably work that out with the city attorney's office.
We have any others in town like that? I mean, I know that's something that's done in other communities, do we have any?
When we had those apartments off of Cloverdale, there was, was there a condition there on relocation assistance? I don't think there was about subsidizing rent there, but I think there was some relocation assistance that was agreed to at the council level.
Correct, outside of the zoning action. The only thing I can think of is the Housing Authority used, there's a density bonus in the ordinance over off 10th, I forget, Oaks at 10th or one of those projects, but they ultimately ended up coming back and resonating to RMU S, so they didn't enact it, but they considered it. That's the only one I can think of.
Yeah, that is a feature of our UDO, is you, if you get a, you get a density bonus if you, if you subsidize a number of the units. So in this case, they're asking for what in essence is a density bonus there, so...
Okay. Well, I just know we got, we get around to making a motion here, there's got to be some details that's got to be worked out. I like the thought that 22 units forever will be at a reduced rate. Now, what that rate is, how we establish it, like it work, I don't know.
I think, yeah, and I think the details of that wording would need to be worked out, but if, if you go in that direction, you could at least get their commitment to set aside the number of units and at some, at some rate that is discussed and agreed to with the city attorney's office.
Okay. Well, we're only halfway through this hearing, so let's go to the opposition. First person signed up is Bonnie Kraus.
Hello, I'm Bonnie Kraus. I live at 2001 Boone Avenue, Winston-Salem, 27103. Anything else you need for me to start? I'm a board member of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association, I'm the immediate past president. When the planning staff came through and some members of the planning board attempting to engage neighborhoods in the development of the area plan, when they came to Ardmore, they were pretty blown away because the attendance was heavy. We went in big for area plan input, we had a lot of input into it, we found the staff to be very professional, the board members who did visit and dropped in, and there were several meetings, but the ones who visited were all courteous and professional, and we felt that we were heard. And when the area plan came through that was finally adopted and that passed the city council, we considered that a big win. I'm here to tell you right now that we oppose this project, for not least of which is that it is such a stark deviation from the area plan in a number of ways, some of which have already been addressed. I would just have to say that from the street view alone, it's really totally unacceptable, just from people that just love older established homes. The fact that the property owner may have allowed the exterior to become somewhat unsightly because of deferred maintenance should not go to the benefit of saying, "Well, these houses aren't worth keeping." They're eminently worth keeping. A lot of these are craftsman-style homes, they may not have been painted on the outside for a while, but I can tell you inside, a lot of them are practically like they were with original fixtures, red oak floors, they've got tile-fronted fireplaces with some tiger oak mantles. I mean, these are nice, these are nice homes, these are not dumps. In the Ardmore neighborhood, we've made a real effort to accommodate development, it is a part of our mission to preserve the essentially, the basically residential character of the neighborhood, but we also have supported where we thought that it was appropriate. We've weighed in in a positive way on behalf of businesses and residential projects. Yes, there may be a need for apartments, even apartments like these, 14, 15, 1700, whatever. There was a lot of sort of vagueness in some of these numbers, but let's just, let's just say whatever they were. But it doesn't have to be here, it doesn't have to be on this street, it doesn't have to be on this corridor that connects two great neighborhoods and that will involve either tearing down some wonderful little homes or completely overwhelming them on the opposite side of the street. Now, there was some of these drawings that were put up here earlier, one of the amendments or whatever was added to this show, the streetscape or something with the new building on the right and the existing homes on the left, and it makes it look like they're almost the same size. But standing in the porch of one of these homes on one side of the street and looking up at this colossal building on the other side would be like living in the parking lot of Baptist Hospital. So we are opposed to it on a number of grounds. The traffic, we're very concerned about. I don't know when was the last time you tried to make a left turn off Academy, but I go through there nearly every day. I go to Green Street Church, I do a lot of business downtown, I shop over that way, I visit friends over that way. I'm very concerned about this U-turn plan. I don't think that people are really going to go that way, I think they're going to cut up through Fourth Street and put stress on the traffic in the West End, and I would not want to be coming through West End neighborhood with people in a hurry to get to work going up those basically small streets that were not built for this kind of traffic. Peters Creek Parkway was, but that's not where they're going to go to get to work. If they're going north, they're not going to go across four lanes of traffic on Peters Creek Parkway, wait for the light to turn something to a U-turn when, when there's another way to get there, and that's through this neighborhood and up into West End. So those are a couple of reasons. Again, I want to emphasize that these properties that they're talking about tearing down and replacing with needed housing, it's not that neighborhood that needs this housing, the city does, and in the area plans for the different parts of the city, there is provision for that. And my final point would just be this, this is a great neighborhood, the, all of it, the parts that it connects and everything else, once the character of this part of this neighborhood is lost, nobody's ever going to come back and make an argument for preserving the opposite side of the street. It's camel's nose under the tent. It will be very, very soon, I mean, we're not even, what, three years into this area plan, and we're already talking about dumping it on its head. So what will happen is, once that building is built with its fancy four-story park and whatever they do, and if they do it exactly as they said with this compassionate housing, which they keep piling on the kind of goodwill, each incarnation that this prospect has come before you, they keep piling on one more, you know, sort of a promise of goodwill. But, but even if that happened, it's going to totally overwhelm that other side of the street, and there will never be again a way to put it back. And the, and the impulse and the inertia or the impulse will be to go ahead and just tear down all the rest of them too, and put what can, what it would suit the neighborhood then is to match what's across the street, and that's not what we want.
Thank you, ma'am. Joanne Mount?
My name is Joanne Mount, and I live at 1238 West Fourth Street, and I've lived there for, let's see, for 36 years. When I bought my house in 1981, I bought it in a residential neighborhood, in a historic neighborhood. I knew what I was moving into, and I expected it to stay that way. And the city in the past have zoned it that way. I'm very pleased that there are different neighbors, that there are multi-houses down there, I don't have any problem with that. However, I think the idea of turning this part of Fourth Street into a, well, into a building zone... a building zone with such density, which you all had already said you didn't want. You, you did that by zoning it the way you zoned it, and to go back on that and just change because someone comes up with a plan which now they keep tweaking every few months to make it a little more palatable, it is not palatable. Those of us who live on that street know the kind of traffic that comes through there. There is parking on both sides, there are driveways, and it is difficult often to get in and out. And frankly, I think that to add this kind of density would make it so much worse. The staff saw that, and they talked about the number of cars that would come through there. It was four or five times what is coming through there right now, and I can't imagine that much more traffic on our street. The Winston-Salem Journal article had a lot of response to it on social media, most of which was quite negative. They were very concerned about it. I opposed it when I came to this meeting because of the traffic and because of what I've seen, and I tell you, after seeing these visuals, I am adamantly opposed to it. I'm asking you to vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. David Malt? She speaks for you. I understand, I understand. Okay, John Marshall?
John Marshall, three-four-hundred Paddington Lane, two-seven-one-oh-six Winston-Salem. This is good housing stock. This is not housing stock that needs to be torn down, and it also affords affordable housing in the area that is absolutely at a premium. And I'm with the Ardmore Association. By the way, I'm here representing the West End Association. If, if this project is approved, you can count the rest of the houses to go down. This is an end run around a zoning request that you turned down unanimously a few months ago. When this, when this, if this project happens, there'll be no, the next time they come, they'll say, "We'll look at this zoning." It's why they'll justify the second and third and fourth sections of it. The RSQ and RM eighteen is good zoning for this area. I think the first speaker said something to the point that this project is what Winston-Salem will look like. Well, there's places for this kind of a development, and there are some in Winston, but the West End doesn't feel like this is a good place for this project, and this doesn't need to be the face of Winston-Salem. It needs to be part of the face of Winston-Salem, but the West End and these houses there need to be part of the face of Winston-Salem also. The traffic increase, the traffic study may be fine in a vacuum, but in practicality, seventy-five percent of the people coming out of those apartments are going north. And they said it was gonna be sixty cars in the morning drive. Out of one hundred and forty-six apartments, there's only gonna be sixty cars going north? I find that amazing. When you live there, you'll see a difference. And the other thing is, the traffic is tough going up there because in these old houses, they didn't have garages. So, there are some driveways, but there's a whole lot of on-street parking. You can see on-street parking wall-to-wall on Piedmont Avenue and West End Boulevard. There is no place to park there, so that becomes a real problem for the, the additional traffic. This is totally out of scale and unlimited density. I think unlimited density is probably too dense. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Okay? How much time we have left here?
About a minute.
A minute, okay.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Margaret Herman, and I live at one-twenty-two Piedmont Avenue. There are two things I'd like to point out. One is, I am in one of those houses that does not have a driveway, so we do have to park on the street. And most of these dwellings not have just one or only half of a driver, they're going to have two people that are driving, and many of them are going to have to work. We're talking about a huge amount of traffic. We can't already hold it. For my street, Piedmont Avenue, with people parked on both sides, there is enough room for an SUV or a truck. That's it. The school buses go by each parked car. There is no room for a second unless they happen to be two small vehicles and one of them pulls right next to the other cars. So, Piedmont is a cut-through to First Street heading west. The other thing, on the conversation about the flow of the traffic, it was pointed out that DOT was filled in about this and consulted on this. As you remember from our last meeting, they were not in approval of this. He was concerned about this. Yes, he was filled in on the plans. He did not approve it. Mr. Ivey, I'm sorry. The curvature there at the Hawthorne Curve is being made more gentle as the off-ramp comes out. The rate of traffic is gonna be fifty-five miles an hour. That's the purpose of all of this reconstruction that's going on. The traffic is gonna be coming faster down Peters Creek Parkway. The people on this project only are going to be able to turn right to get in. And then, as he said last time when he was talking to you all, then these cars that are only going to be able to get out on that right are going to be meeting cars going significantly rapidly. So, it's gonna make it even more difficult. So, again, I urge you not to, not to let this happen. And I agree with everything that's been said, of course, about the houses in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all the time, so I'll declare the public hearing closed. Board members' comments, questions?
Well, I mean, we've seen part of this before, and, and so I think we have some familiarity to it. I didn't push the issue of traffic again this time because that's, that hasn't changed and it hasn't been solved in the midst of this, and I don't know that DOT will ever solve it in terms of allowing that left up Peters Creek, like, could move the traffic out of here. So, really, I would make a motion for denial in, in agreement with the staff, and I'd make it on several bases. First of all, that this is essentially raising a neighborhood in there. Secondly, the, the size and scale of the housing that's in there. Thirdly, the traffic that would be forced north up that direction. Fourth would be, there hasn't been a clear resolution of floodplain yet. Now, that's still on the possibility of being cleared up, but if you know that area during rains, you know what the problems are that are related to that. Fifthly, there was, as was mentioned, and, and I was also in attendance at some of those Ardmore meetings, a real buy-in by the neighborhood to this. And in my memory, we did not hear a request that this be turned into a higher-density area. It wasn't like a, an argument about that. It was, it was agreed that this would remain at this density as a residential neighborhood in the midst of this. And then lastly, for whatever reason, and, and the city may be as much involved with this as anyone, we have not resolved this adult establishment and, and putting more people right next to it, which is, is something that by UDO, we don't agree with. We, we don't need to set people up. Now, I could go on to other reasons because, you know, with the change in forty, the things that have been said about traffic will be multiplied for the next two years, but, you know, we do hope there'll be something at the end of two years where it will be more resolved, but it will certainly be worse than we can even imagine on that First Street as, as we move into Peters Creek first getting resolved and then what happens with First Street. So, I, I make a motion for denial.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Bryan, second, but Mr. Lee. Discussion?
I just want to say I agree with Mr. Bryan's statements. I, I kind of feel that this is even more problematic than the, when the proposal that we had before because it leaves a portion of the neighborhood intact, and in so doing, it creates that incompatibility in size and, and scale that was discussed by the staff. And I think ultimately would, is this would be a stepping stone to replacement of all the, the rest of the neighborhood, the precedent issue. So, I just think that there are too many issues, and as far as the, the stormwater, I'm very concerned about that, even if they can get a permit, because you're building in so much of the floodplain, that's going to have downstream impacts inevitably, even if the permit is, is granted. So, I just, I really feel that this is, it has too many problems.
Does GMA one extend to bypass forty? Where is the boundary between GMA one and two?
Well, right here, it would be Business Forty, so the ballpark area is in, and let me correct one thing. I said I was thinking that the Link Apartments was in GMA one. It's actually in two. However, it is in what the South Central Area Plan at that time that it was approved recommended as an urban residential gateway with a mix of moderate to high-density residential and office uses with some commercial uses. So, it, it clearly showed that site for higher density than what the area plan shows this site.
Paul, now, the, I, I think we talked at a previous meeting about new apartments close to be, to the ballpark in the parking, in the parking lot there. We've got, what, two-hundred-and-sixty units on Brookstown that are being built. Are there other areas in that plan of around the ballpark that are appropriate for apartments?
Well, that's, that's why you have GMA one up in there, is to try to focus that higher-density development up in there and also in the, in the, in the downtown area. And then, once you get south of Business Forty, the idea is the density, you, you still have it higher, but it's not as high as you would have in a downtown area there.
Okay.
Comments? And board members? Lamb, you got anything to say? You normally do.
Well, I do. I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, I, we don't have any of this unlimited stuff. Our oldest way in which we planned was around these metro activity centers, and I guess that just south of this property would have been considered a MAC, not, you know, back when we had MACs. Now, we call them something else. But, you know, the whole, the whole concept was, was to load up the density right next to the MACs and then ease it up, and, and we're, we're essentially right next to the MAC, to that metro activity center. And, but I can see, I'm looking at a satellite, you know, of that, and I can see, you know, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of green there, too. It's not all paving down there right now. You know, there's still... But it's also so, it seems so artificial, the distinction between Links, the, the Link Apartments and this. I recognize, and I do understand the concept of borders, and if GMA ends at Business Forty, you know, and that's, you know, that's, I mean, there's a reason that we have GMA one, there's a reason we have GMA two. I understand that, but...
And, and you're right, Clarence, there is, there is an activity center shown in Legacy. It's focusing there at Academy and, and Peters Creek. We, you know, we changed the terminology from metro activity center and community activity center and neighborhood activity center to just activity center. So, it didn't, wasn't suggesting by that that it was this huge, huge, super-high density, but the idea is, yes, you do try to focus higher-density housing and commercial and office in those activity centers.
I'm, I'm torn on this. The project itself, if it were viewed as a Peters Creek project as opposed to a Fourth Street project, would make all sense in the world as a part of the gateway into downtown, into the ballpark. My concern is, is the traffic going through the residential neighborhood. If somehow this traffic could get on and off of Peters Creek without impacting the neighborhood, you know, fifteen, twenty million dollars tax base and new development right in area that downtown, but I'm, I'm kind of torn. I like the project, I'm just not sure it works with the neighbors.
You know, the comparison that I think of is the old Watkins and Green Street neighborhood, where the ballpark was. You know, you had some older homes, great character, but totally dilapidated. It's totally different where we're talking about now. There, there's no comparison.
And, and also, there are a lot of places on Peters Creek that need to be redeveloped.
Right.
I wouldn't necessarily say this is the one.
Yeah.
Any other comments? We have a motion for denial. All in favor of the motion to deny? Opposed? It passes five to two. Okay? The motion. Okay, and I guess we're to staff report?
Okay. You have at your places, I believe, the draft of the annual, the planning board's annual report, so just, and I think you might have gotten it electronically as well, so just wanted to make sure you had that. We weren't gonna ask you to take action on it today, but you'll have it on your agenda for work, work session, and then, of course, once you approve it, then we'll get it all created up and get it to the elected bodies and, and all that. You also got, I believe, in your packet, your agenda packet, a, a separate document, the development dashboard for the second quarter. So, just, just one quick little blurb on that. It was another, another record setter for non-residential. And actually, we just got the building permit report for July, and we were at fifty-four million in construction activity that was permitted just in July in the city and the county. That was pretty big, twenty-six percent higher than July of last year, and a good share of that was residential. So, that's interesting. The last thing I have for you is that Winston-Salem has shown up on another national survey. This one, interestingly enough, is a survey on hundred top places for millennials. So, and I know we have struggled with that before, but we showed up as number forty-six in the country, and the other North Carolina places were, believe it or not, Durham, number one. Raleigh was, was like twenty-two, Charlotte was number five. We were the, them and us were the only North Carolina cities in that top one hundred. Well, no, excuse me.
It may be that all the downtown development had something to do with that.
Maybe, maybe. So, just leave you with that little bit of information, and that's it for staff report.
I see one millennial in the audience. I wonder if he would agree.
Any board members, anything for the good of the order here?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Just a second. All in favor?